October 4, 2022. This meeting will be held entirely by teleconference. All council members and staff will only participate via the Zoom platform. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to recent amendments to the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act, allowing teleconferencing during a proclaimed state of emergency. This bill is AB 361. The purpose of the bill is to provide the safest environment for the public, elected officials and staff while allowing for continued operation of the government and public participation during the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar and live Spanish interpretation will be available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public chat portions, attendees may use the raise your hand feature and will be called on unmuted when it is your turn to speak. The meeting will also be streamed on Channel 27 on Pacific Coast TV and on Facebook, the City of Half Moon Bay's Facebook page. You can also participate by phone by dialing 669-900-9128 using webinar ID 995-8894-7925. If joining by phone, you star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. And Victor, could you give the Spanish language instructions, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. Mr. Chittister, Ms. Engberg, city staff and all members of the public, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. Muy buenas noches. Les queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes esta noche que la reunión se celebrará íntegramente por teleconferencia. Todos los miembros del Consejo y el personal solo participarán a través de la plataforma Zoom utilizando el proceso descrito a continuación. La reunión se lleva a cabo de conformidad con los recientes enmiendas a las reglas de teleconferencia requeridas por la ley Ralph M. Brown, que permite la teleconferencia durante un estado proclamado de emergencia cuando los funcionarios locales han recomendado el distanciamiento social, es decir, el AB 361. El propósito de este AB 361 es proporcionar el ambiente más seguro para el público, los funcionarios electos y el personal al tiempo que permite la operación continua del gobierno y la participación pública durante la pandemia de COVID-19. También le queremos dejar saber que esta reunión será totalmente interpretada en el español y para poder acceder el canal de audio, usted tendrá que hacer clic en el botón de un mundo, un icono de un mundo o el globo al fondo de su pantalla y después de allí aparecerá un menú y entonces usted podrá seleccionar el idioma. Y si se une por teléfono, para poder alzar la mano sería la estrella nueve y para silenciar o desilenciar su micrófono sería la estrella seis. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Gracias, Victor. We'll also be having Spanish interpretation services provided by Nicholas Laskovich this evening. Could I please have a roll call, please? Councilmember Brownstone? Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Rabeck? Vice Mayor Penrose? Mayor Reddick? You have a quorum? Mayor, you're muted. Wonderful. Thank you. We're moving on to public forum and this is the opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on the regular agenda, but that may also be on the consent calendar. So Jessica, could you? First speaker is Bill Balson. Bill, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bill Balson. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. On March 16, 2020, $10 million was withdrawn from the sewer capital fund and placed into the city's cash pool according to documents the city provided to me. This action followed authorization by the city council on March 3, 2020, to purchase the Corporation Yard property. This appears to be a misappropriation of funds of very large proportion. The sewer capital fund is restricted by state law to uses for sewer rate payers and for no other purposes. During the March 3 city council meeting, there was no discussion of the source of funds to be used. However, the resolution passed unanimously by the city council directed staff to use reserve funds and to apply for a loan to pay for the land purchase and anticipated construction by the city. It seems to me likely the loan application commingled the city's unencumbered assets with the sewer capital funds in presenting the city's financial position. It is my opinion that the four then-current city council members bear full responsibility for this abuse of trust. They should resign immediately. All records regarding the sewer fund and the Corporation Yard must be preserved, including personal emails and cell phone records pending an investigation. The city attorney should immediately engage an outside independent counsel to investigate these matters fully. I've submitted additional written comments that I incorporate herein.
Thank you, Bill. I think it's appropriate for staff to respond, but we'll wait until everyone else is addressed with the council. Are there other speakers?
Yes, one more. Crystal and Geet?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to give kudos on the Summer's End Festival. It was super fun. And as somebody there who had a booth, it was really nice to engage with the community. It was really, I know normally it's in Carter Park, but it was really fun to have it on the street because lots of people stumbled upon it, which was really cool. So thank you very much for that and thank you to Eddie and Matt and Parks and Rec and all the other staff that really helped bring that together. And then I also wanted to let the community know that the chamber is hosting a candidate's forum, free and open to the public. It'll be on October 19th, which is a Wednesday, starting at 6 o'clock at the library. And we're going to have a really cool charcuterie snacks and lots of time for the community to meet the candidates. We're currently up to 10 candidates across multiple races, including all candidates running for city council. So it's going to be a really great bipartisan event just to allow candidates and community members to get to know each other better and discuss hot topics. And I think that is it. So thank you for everything that you guys do and the chamber appreciates you.
Thank you, Crystal. No more public speakers, Mayor. Oh, thank you, Jessica. Would someone like to just briefly respond to Mr. Balson's comments?
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to offer a very brief response. This is, this is the first time that I've heard this allegation that there was this, we know that there's been questions about how the sewer fund is used and how it relates to the general fund. But this is the first time I've heard a connection between our acquisition of the Corporation Yard and sewer funds. And so we'd have to investigate the circumstances around it. As the assistant city manager at the time, I was involved in that transaction. And to my recollection, there was never any connection between the sewer fund and that acquisition. We financed it through a loan from IBank, the State of California Infrastructure Bank. And the property itself was the collateral for that loan. And we've, we have used general funds towards some of the improvements that are happening now, as well as some of the loan proceeds. But again, I'm not, I'm not aware of any connection between the sewer fund and that acquisition or the improvements happening now, but I'm happy to work with our finance staff and to take a look at the history that was presented tonight and make assurances that the funds were used appropriately.
I think that would be appropriate to do. These are, you know, serious charge allegations. And so it would seem to me that you would want to respond promptly, but you want to respond thoroughly and look at all the data. So I expect that to include input from all legal counsel.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, we did get one more raised here. Sure. Let me take that. Eliana Betancourt? Eliana, if you could unmute yourself?
Hola, buenas noches.
Eliana Betancourt, buenas noches, señor. Este, habla Victor Hernandez. Voy a ser el traductor de usted esta noche. Este, si puede mantener sus trozos así manejables para que todo mundo pueda escuchar lo que usted tenga que decir, ¿de acuerdo?
Sí, buenas, buenas noches. Ah, mira, yo trabajo, yo estoy, yo soy este, yo, yo soy, estoy, estoy en el grupo de viviendas justas del programa de ALAS. Me gustaría saber cómo va el proceso de viviendas, de viviendas para las personas de bajos ingresos.
Okay. So good evening. I'm with the Just Housing Group and ALAS and I just want to know how the process is coming along.
Adelante, señor.
Sí, cómo va el proceso. Tendría saber cómo va el proceso, de qué ha pasado.
So just how the process is going, what's been happening?
Quiere continuar, señor?
Hola.
Eliana, quiere continuar?
Sí, me gustaría saber cómo va el proceso, qué, 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 qué han hecho ustedes para trabajar en esto.
So I'd like to know how the process is going. I'd like to know what you have done in accordance to that.
Algo más, señorita?
No, eso es todo.
That's all. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, señora.
You do have one more. Carolina?
Creo que vamos. Hola, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes, señora. Este, habla Victor Hernandez. Soy el traductor que le va a ayudar a interpretar todo. Este, me hace un favor si puede mantener la información manejable para que de esa manera todo mundo pueda escuchar lo que usted tenga que decir, ¿de acuerdo?
Okay, muchas gracias.
Gracias. Adelante, por favor.
Buenas tardes. Como siempre estamos aquí como latinos unidos queriendo saber o estar al pendiente de que nuestra causa sea escuchada.
Okay, un momento. So good evening. As always, we are here united as Latinos, always wanting to know that our cause is heard.
Adelante, señor.
Y queremos hacerles saber que estamos presentes y estamos interesados en las viviendas justas para todos.
Gracias. So we want you all to know that we are here, we are present, and we want just housing for all.
Adelante.
Quizá por el momento no es un punto tan importante en sus, en sus agendas, pero la comunidad está sufriendo y aclamamos por viviendas justas.
You there?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Hey, I would just.
Un momento, señor.
John, could you mute yourself, please?
So at the moment, maybe this topic isn't so important or isn't really on your agenda. But, you know, we want you to know that while that is happening, the community is suffering and we just want just housing.
Continúe, por favor, señor.
Siento que es importante que ellos como consejo estén conscientes que los trabajadores esenciales necesitamos también vivir justamente. Somos quien provee muchos, muchos alimentos, aparte de eso, atendemos sus hoteles, sus restaurantes, sus tiendas.
Uh huh. So, you know, we feel it's important that you as a council be aware of us as essential workers because we provide a lot of the food and we take care of your restaurants and your hotels and your stores.
Adelante, señor.
Les pedimos, por favor, que hagan bien eso. Es algo urgente que necesita la comunidad. Sé que hay cosas importantes como la alcantarilla, como a veces proyectos que hacen de las calles, pero las viviendas es algo tan esencial para todos.
Gracias. So we ask you to please do well with this because it's an urgent, it's an urgent matter for the community. You know, sometimes we know that maybe there's more important things like, you know, sewer issues or street projects. But we want you to know that this housing is essential for all.
Adelante, señor.
No sé si ellos están conscientes que la renta ha aumentado. Nosotros seguimos ganando el mínimo. Ya no hay donde vivir. Por eso es algo por lo que aclamamos nosotros, porque las viviendas justas es algo esencial para todos. Vivir en este pueblo es caro.
Gracias. So don't know if you're aware or not, but the rents have gone up and we continue to work for the minimum amount. And we think that just housing is essential and living in Half Moon Bay is expensive.
Algo más, señor.
Por favor, atiendan al llamado de los trabajadores, de los trabajadores esenciales, no los de la agricultura nada más. Todos los trabajadores esenciales. Todos necesitamos.
So please listen to the call of all workers, all essential workers, not just ag workers, but we all need this.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias, Carolina. No more speakers, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I think it would be appropriate since there are folks with questions about housing and may not realize that we have an item later on in the evening. Just to point that out, that the first item on the regular agenda is related to a housing development that the city is currently working on with Mercy Housing in ALAS and is really a promising potential project. I'll also share that in November, we'll be coming forward with an item for the council to provide direction on some options to potentially make 880 Stone Pine more available for future housing opportunities.
I think that was totally appropriate. Thank you for that.
I guess I should have asked you first before I said it all.
Well, actually, I was going to butt in at one point and then I realized the speaker had more to go and then I sort of forgot at the end of it. So you jumped in. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're moving on to proclamations and presentations. And so tonight we have a present, a proclamation that Cassie from Coast Pride will be here to address. But I'm going to read the proclamation first. And so this proclamation is to celebrate LGBTQI plus History Month. October is Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer and Intersex History Month. The month of October holds special meaning for the LGBTQI plus community as it is the month of the first march on Washington for lesbian and gay rights, which took place in 1979. So it's an auspicious month to recognize the lives and achievements of those who have contributed to the progression of LGBTQI plus movements around the world and those who continue to do so. The official LGBTQI plus History Month celebrates the achievements of 31 LGBT, LGBTQI plus icons, featuring a new person each day of the month with a video and biography. It's a great way to learn about people in the community who are truly making a difference. And I encourage people to visit lgbthistorymonth.com to learn about these icons. It's also a time for us to reflect on the progress we've made over the years as a nation in the fight for justice, inclusion and equality, while reaffirming our commitment to do more to support LGBTQI plus rights in our community and beyond. This month, we remind the community that they are valued and respected. The leadership of Half Moon Bay sees you for who you are, members of our community deserving of dignity, recognition and support. Today and every day, the City of Half Moon Bay stands with LGBTQI plus Americans in the ongoing struggle against intolerance, discrimination and injustice. As a city, we condemn the dangerous state laws and legislation we see in other parts of the country and the world that target this community, particularly youth. And we remain steadfast in our commitment to helping the community, people in our community and throughout the country to live free from violence. Our support is inclusive of LGBTQI plus seniors and their absolute right to age and dignity. And we must confront the disproportionate levels of poverty, homelessness and unemployment in this community. This month, we honor the resilience of LGBTQI plus people who are fighting to live authentically and freely. We reaffirm our belief that LGBTQI plus rights are human rights and we recommit to delivering protection, safety and equality to this community and their families so that everyone can realize the full promise of America. The city council appreciates and recognizes the importance of LGBTQI plus History Month as a means of educating and calling to action the citizens of Half Moon Bay to work together by fighting prejudice and discrimination in their own lives. Increasing visibility and raising awareness about LGBTQI plus history fosters a welcoming and inclusive community where LGBTQ residents, employees and visitors can feel welcome and included, live their authentic lives and be treated with dignity and respect. So Cassie, would you like to make some remarks this evening?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you so much, Council, for your ongoing and continual support. I'm just, I've never been here to witness a proclamation, so I'm so excited. This is a first for me. Yeah, it's, my name is Cassie, Vice President-elect over at Coast Pride. I'm just so thankful for your continuing support for that moment of reflection. Wonderful job on the acronym. And we're just looking forward to continuing our work on the coast side with all your support. And we would be nowhere without like the collaboration of our need bringing organizations. And we're still navigating what that coalition building and collaboration looks like. And we just thank you so much. Thank all of you here present to witness it and to be part of that work.
We are here for you. Congratulations on your upcoming move.
Thank you.
And I believe we will have a printed copy of this proclamation also, that we will be able to give you a hard copy, a signed hard copy. So looking forward to that. So the next, we have a presentation from Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District on the proposed Cloverdale Uplands acquisition. This is an informational presentation. And I believe we have Mike Williams. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Reddick and council members and city manager Chittister. My name is Mike Williams. I'm the real property manager with the Open Space District and I have a PowerPoint I will pull up and share with you. Let me know when that is pulling up.
We can see it, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Are you able to put it in a presentation view? There, there you go. You're on it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm here to do an informational presentation on Mid Penn's proposed purchase of the 6,300 acre Cloverdale Ranch property located at the southern boundary of the city, excuse me, of the town of Pescadero. And this, this picture is from the scenic overlook at Wilbur's Watch Trail at the southern end of the Cloverdale property and it overlooks Pigeon Point Lighthouse out to the west. So as mentioned, the Cloverdale Ranch, which is owned by Peninsula Open Space Trust, is at the southern boundary of the town of Pescadero. And it is bounded by four public roads, Pescadero Road to the north, Cloverdale Road to the east, Gazos Creek Road and Gazos Creek to the south, and then Cabrillo Highway and Bean Hollow Roads to the west. Between 1997 and 2012, Post assembled this property in four transactions, which at one time totaled over 8,000 acres. About 900 acres had been transferred to Butino State Park and then another 40 acres, which was Pigeon Point, was also transferred to state parks. Cloverdale is also surrounded by over 31,000 acres of protected park and open space lands, including Butino State Parks across Cloverdale Road to the east, Big Basin Redwood State Park to the south and east, Onion Auevo to the south, Pigeon Point and Bean Hollow State Beaches to the west and the Pescadero Marsh to the north. So here are some of the reasons for this purchase, to preserve open space habitat, watershed, continued rangeland, and to create a new preserve, Cloverdale Open Space Preserve. The habitat on the property includes one of the healthiest populations of the protected San Francisco Garter Snake and Red Legged Frog and their Steelhead Trout Habitat at both Butino Creek on the north end of the property and Gazos Creek at the southern end of the property. As part of this, we would continue existing grazing operations of two ranchers over about 2,500 acres of rangeland. And those leases will be assigned to Mid Penn and they will include a rangeland management plan. In partnership with Post, we will also protect the adjoining farmland for future private ownership subject to agricultural conservation easements. Management of the existing Wilbur's Watch Trail will fall under Mid Penn management. And in the interim, we'll develop a public access plan until future public trail planning is developed. This is an enlarged picture of the property. The Uplands property is represented in yellow and that's the 6,300 acres Mid Penn is proposing to purchase. Mid Penn is proposing to purchase. The purple parcels are approximately four hundred acres of existing farmland, both irrigated row crop and dry farmland that surround the property, though the majority of the farmland is on the eastern side of the property. This is a view from the ridge top on the north portion of the property towards the northwest, overlooking the Butino watershed with Pescadero in the center of the screen. And this is looking south and west at Onion Nuevo. And this are, these are the two Upper Bean Hollow reservoirs, which provide agricultural irrigation to local farms located west and to the north of the Cloverdale Ranch. The proposed purchase terms are purchasing the sixty-three hundred acre property from Post for sixteen million dollars, which represents a fifty percent bargain sale as the property has an appraised value of approximately thirty-two million. Mid Penn has been successful in getting in almost ten million dollars in grants from both the state and county, and will utilize those purchase grants to purchase Cloverdale. And the balance of a little over six million will use our voter approved Measure A bond funds, which were approved in 2014. As mentioned earlier, as part of this purchase, the existing grazing leases will continue and be assigned to the district for about twenty-five hundred acres located on the east side of the property largely. And then Post will retain those purple areas, which total about four hundred acres, for irrigated and dry farmland for future sales to farmers subject to agricultural easements. Under Mid Penn ownership, Mid Penn will patrol and manage the existing 1.1 mile Wilbur's Watch Trail. And as mentioned earlier, we are developing an interim public access plan until public trails are developed through a future public process. And with that, I open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions from council members or staff from Lake? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I don't have any questions, but I just want to comment that I think this is wonderful. The more of our open land and farmland that we can preserve, the better, and good on you.
Thank you.
And good for us. You know, we are so lucky to have these two astonishing partners, Peninsula Open Space Trust and Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. You know, I'm just tickled pink. I have to pinch myself when we look around and see all the fabulous open space and the wonderful stewardship that these two organizations bring to our coastal natural resources and how they've stepped up in, you know, in the times of wildfire. And I just think it's totally amazing. So count me grateful. I think I understand the terms of the transaction, and I don't have any specific questions. Anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised. Mike, let Half Moon Bay know if we can be of assistance or support. And we really appreciate your taking the time to, you know, to join our meeting and let us know what's going on and keeping us in the loop.
Thank you for the opportunity, and have a good evening.
You too. Stay safe. Vice Mayor, would you like to lower your hand? Thank you. Okay, so now we have Mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. I would just remind folks that this Thursday is the first Thursday of the month, and Make It Main Street will be happening, so come on down. It goes on from three to seven PM, and there's all kinds of activities going on, including the Maker Space and Movies with the Odd Fellows. It's a wonderful event. And the other thing I want to draw your attention to is the fact that Monday, October tenth, will be the Safeway World Championship Pumpkin Wayoff. It's the forty-ninth annual wayoff, and it'll take place at the IDES grounds at seven thirty-five Main Street, and will go on from about seven AM to eleven AM. So come on down for the wayoff. While you're downtown, check out our fabulous Pumpkin Festival mural, which is celebrating the fiftieth annual Half Moon Bay Arts and Pumpkin Festival, which will be on Saturday and Sunday, October fifteenth and sixteenth. So this will be the first one we've had since 2019, so pretty exciting stuff. And that's all I have in terms of Mayor's announcements. We haven't had any closed sessions in a while, so I'm guessing that there's nothing to report out.
Correct, Mayor. Nothing to report out in this session.
Thank you for that. And now we'll have City Manager updates to Council. And that will start with election information from our City Clerk, Jessica Blair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And after Jessica, we have a brief update from Julissa Acosta, our Community Services Analyst.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly mention that we are sending out the packets to each of the five districts with relevant election information for the district that you live in. So those are being mailed out this week and should arrive by Monday, so please look out for those in your mailboxes. The Samatayó County elections will begin mailing out ballots on Monday, so look out for those as well. And then staff will be out, will be at Make It Main Street this Thursday downtown to answer any election-related questions or questions about the new districts. We also have blown-up maps of the new districts for anyone that would like to come, look at that, and has any questions. Elections Night Out, October twenty-seventh at the library, five to eight PM. You can kind of drop off your ballot, talk with city staff about various projects and some other agencies. And then on October twenty-ninth, we will be at the farmer's market to also answer any election-related questions. So I wanted to share those few updates, and let me know if anyone has any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very helpful, Jessica. Any questions about the election update? Okay, Julissa?
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I will be presenting an update on the minimum wage. So let me share my screen. One second. Can you guys see my screen? Great. So the adopted ordinance establishes that the minimum wage shall increase based on the August to August Consumer CP, sorry, Consumer Price Index, known as the CPI, that is published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The projections for the CPI this year landed between eight and ten percent. However, the actual CPI is five point seven percent. This represents an increase of eighty-nine cents to the current minimum wage, bringing it to sixteen forty-five effective January first, 2023. The tables on your screen represent just a little bit more context and background information, and so folks are able to also see where we are compared to the state of California. We are preparing all the red notices and outreach materials that will be sent out mid-October to all businesses running operations in Half Moon Bay. And if there are any questions or comments, here is my contact information. And people can also send us any questions via email at minimumwage@hmbcd.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julissa. Any questions about that presentation on the minimum wage? Comments? Looks like we don't have any questions or comments. I'm guessing that there'll be more on the minimum wage coming up, future discussions at future meetings, so. Thank you for that. Are there any other updates? I think it would just be nice to tell the public about how our City Clerk, Jessica Blair, is now the Vice President, I think it's Vice President of the California City Clerks Association. And she was elected in September at the League of Cities Conference. Am I correct about that, Jessica?
I was elected in the summer and then sworn in at the League of Cities Annual Conference, yes. But I am the first Vice President for the City Clerks Association of California, which is also the City Clerk's Department of the League of California Cities.
That's wonderful. Congratulations on that wonderful appointment.
Thank you.
Lucky to have you. Okay, so we're moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any items anyone would like to pull? And if not, could you make a motion and read the items? Looking for a volunteer. It looks like Robert's unmuted. Robert?
Sure. I move that we adopt the following items on the consent calendar. Item one A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item one B, agreement with Muni Services for sales and use tax collection and audit services. Item one C, agreements with HDL companies for business license and transient occupancy tax administration collection. And item one D, acceptance of funding from the Zan Zuckerberg Initiative Donor Advised Fund and Advised Fund of Silicon Valley Community Foundation for program evaluation of economic advancement centers in three Samatayó County communities, including the coast side.
Second.
Thank you, Robert and Harvey. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rorback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no ordinances in public hearings this evening, so we're moving on to item three, which is resolutions and staff reports.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself from the following item.
Oh, that's probably a good idea. Thank you for pointing that out. And we'll let you know when it's time to come back.
Please do send me a text message. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could, just on the benefit of the public, Councilor Jimenez is recusing because he is employed by ALIS, which is part of the development team that has submitted the proposal and that we were established recommending the council go ahead and authorize an exclusive negotiation agreement with the development team, including ALIS. And so due to the state's conflict of interest rules, Councilor Jimenez has, as a practice, recused from all of these discussions regarding 555 Kelly.
Thank you for that explanation. I think that's helpful. So the item is item three A, 555 Kelly Avenue Affordable Housing Development. Declare city-owned property as exempt surplus land pursuant to Government Code Section 54221 subsection F1A, and authorize the City Manager to execute an exclusive negotiations agreement between the City and Mercy Housing to enable redevelopment activities. So I'm assuming we'll have a discussion or a presentation by staff, Jill Ikas, Community Development Director, and Mike Nosey, Housing Coordinator.
Yes, Mike's going to take the lead here tonight, and we're really glad to have him.
And good evening, honorable Mayor Riddick and City Council members. I'm going to share my screen momentarily. Okay, and it looks like my presentation is up. It is an honor to be here this evening to speak about the 555 Kelly Avenue Affordable Housing Project. And as mentioned, two resolutions in front of City Council this evening, declaration of city-owned land as exempt surplus, as well as the authorization for City Manager to execute the exclusive, excuse me, exclusive negotiations agreement with Mercy Housing. So our agenda for the presentation, I'll give a quick background on the Mercy Housing and ALAS proposal, as well as going to details about the Surplus Lands Act and the exclusive negotiations agreement, as well as the funding for the project as well. Back in July, staff presented an initial overview of the project and the process that the city has gone through. I wanted to reiterate that the council and staff identified the site at 555 Kelly Avenue for affordable housing development and released an RFQ on February fifteenth, 2022. The RFQ was specific to affordable housing development on the site. And I'll go into detail in a quick overview of the site itself. Multiple nonprofit affordable housing developers were solicited. However, the city did only receive one proposal from Mercy Housing and ALAS. So it was a joint proposal for affordable farmworker housing. It does have a focus on senior farmworkers. It's a total of forty affordable units with a mix of one-bedroom and studios, as well as a potential farmworker, excuse me, a farmworker resource center staffed and managed by ALAS. So the site itself, 555 Kelly Avenue, is a single-family home, which was purchased in 2017 by the city of Half Moon Bay. The site itself would also need to utilize, and this was outlined in the RFQ as a possible ability to make a project a bit more feasible, would be to include the adjacent parking lot, which is part of the Ted Adcock Community Center. The approximate site area, as you can see, is seventeen thousand square feet. So the California Surplus Lands Act, this is a requirement of all jurisdictions throughout the state. Cities have the option to declare sites either surplus or exempt surplus. And this is for public lands that jurisdictions are essentially no law, don't have a potentially official use for. They would need to go through the process of essentially allowing for housing developers to apply to build housing on that land before it could be sold for other purposes. If a city is interested in developing its own affordable housing, such as in the case of Half Moon Bay, then the city can actually declare the land as exempt surplus as long as it meets certain criteria. So there's a, does have to be a similar bidding process that allows affordable housing developers to apply. The city did release the RFQ so that meets that provision. And city staff has been working with HCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development for the state. So the, there's a few different government code sections that could apply to affordable housing developments as part of the exemption for the Surplus Lands Act. The section that basically best fit this project specifically is the section 54221 F1A. And I've provided essentially a comparison for City Council and the public to see that the project that's being proposed does meet and essentially exceeds all of the requirements of this state law and the section that is applicable for this project. So just to reiterate some of these items that are up here on the screen, the requirement is for at least forty percent of the units to be affordable, and that would have to be for households that are at or below sixty percent of the area median income. The proposed project by Mercy Housing and ALAS would have one hundred percent or all of the units affordable, and it would actually provide a deeper affordability to fifty percent and below. At least half of the affordable units under the government code, we need to be affordable to very low income. Whereas in the proposal, all units would be affordable to the lowest affordability levels. The fifty percent AMI and below is also equivalent to acutely low, extremely low and very low. So that is the same difference there, but wanted to spell that out as it was in the government code section. So that is the same difference there, but wanted to spell that out as it was in the government code section. As you can see, the affordability covenant, the city expects that a minimum of 55 years would be a part of the development agreement. And at least 80% of the property will be utilized for housing. Our staff's interpretation is that a large majority, far more than 80%, will be utilized for housing on the site as, as proposed. The exclusive negotiations agreement also will be, I'll be referring to as the ENA. This is the city's acceptance of Mercy Housing as the sole developer of the site, and that we will work with them exclusively. And, and this essentially, once the ENA is executed, it does commence a period of good faith negotiations. In Staff Report Attachment 2, it's Exhibit B of the ENA Agreement, or the Draft ENA Agreement. That's part of the Staff Report. There are performance milestones and timelines, and I'll go into a little more detail on that as well. The ENA also enables pre-development activities, such as further budget and financial analysis. It will go into a lot of detail as far as outlining site and conceptual plans, and that'll include some of the visuals that we would expect to see with any development throughout the city, as far as those virtual simulations relating to, to what the, the building would look like along the streetscape and such. It'll also include soil and environmental reports, as well as community outreach and engagement plans. So the ENA and kind of outlines some of these important tasks. And so that those items can get started. There are items that will return to City Council that are also included in the ENA. The ENA, I wanted to clarify as well for council and members of the public that the ENA does not provide project-specific approval. So there are aspects of the project that do need to go back to City Council for further approval within the ENA timeline, and it's once executed, it's essentially over the course of a year. Staff would return to council within 60 days after the execution with a potential pre-development loan agreement, not to exceed $1 million. Total funding from the city, and I'll go into more detail on the funding slides, would be $2 million, up to $2 million. We would also return with a disposition and developmental, a development lease agreement for the property, and that would include planning approvals for the site, as well as financing obligations and construction timelines. As far as the entitlement discretion, as I mentioned and hinted at earlier, Mercy Housing would have to still follow the standard application process for all project approvals as it relates to zoning for the, the site, as well as environmental review, coastal development permits, and other discretionary permits. So the project funding, it, it does take multiple sources, and I know that's been a theme in tonight's evening, this evening's City Council meeting from some of the other updates that have come before this, but item here. But as you can see, it does, it does take a strong collaborative approach to, to bring affordable housing, especially 100% affordable housing, to fruition. As you can see, the estimated total construction budget as it stands now, and what was included in the proposal is roughly $30.5 million. That would include a large construction loan, as well as additional funding from the county city, and then also potential grant through the Joe Serna Farmworker Housing Grant, as well as tax credit financing. And to, just on the tax credit financing, the standard to, to reach certain provisions of tax credit financing does require the site to have at least 40 units in order to seek the maximum tax credit financing, which ultimately increases the affordability. And as previously mentioned, I did want to highlight just the collaborative nature overall that it takes for projects like this to move forward. And in the, the spirit of that collaborative nature, I wanted to highlight a couple things about local funding. So San Mateo County does have affordable housing funds. They released that through a, apologies for not writing out NOFA, but a Notice of Funding Availability Application Process. It is a competitive process. Mercy Housing is expected to apply for those, for that funding as part of their proposal. They would be seeking up to $3.2 million in support of the project. As of today, another exciting development, and this is the collaborative component. $1.5 million has already been approved by the County Board of Supervisors at their meeting today. The funding comes from their American Rescue Plan Act funds. It was earmarked for farmworker housing, and the county was assessing other sites throughout the county for potential farmworker housing. And in that spirit of partnership, when county staff and supervisors learned of our project here in Half Moon Bay and the, the proposal that came through that specifically related to farmworker housing, the County Board of Supervisors wanted to move this funding forward. So a very exciting aspect of additional support for the project. So as far as the city's Affordable Housing Fund, that is where the potential $2 million and so dollars of support toward the project would stem from. The balance currently in the Affordable Housing Fund is $2.11 million. I believe in the Staff Report, we did, I, I missed, included the, the amount as $2.16 million. I was going off of old numbers. I believe we had money earmarked towards some of our community partnerships and had not included that, so I apologize for that typo in the miscommunication in the Staff Report, but wanted to make that clear for the record that the current balance of the Affordable Housing Fund is $2.11 million. Mercy Housing would, would provide a pre-development budget during the ENA period, and as previously mentioned, that would be the pre-development budget. We would not expect that to exceed $1 million, and that's what has been included in the draft ENA. As, as mentioned also earlier, the, the pre-development loan itself would return to City Council for approval, and staff would return with a lot more detail on what would be included in that agreement. I also, this evening, wanted to, this is a potentially redundant slide, but I wanted to highlight it yet again, just to provide some insight for those who may have missed our presentation back in July, that the, for a, a single person in San Mateo County, the annual, the area median income is $116,000 per year. Thus why average rents are typically a bit higher in San Mateo County generally than other areas throughout the state. Average rent in Half Moon Bay for studios and one-bedrooms is, is roughly around $2,000 per month, although it's not unusual to see rents even higher than that. Typically, for affordable housing, we don't like to see folks spending more than 30% of their income toward their housing expenses. That would be inclusive of rent and utilities. The average farmworker earns roughly $20,000 per year, plus or minus. And what I have here on the screen is just to provide the 2021 income for at least a one-person household, so acutely low, up to $17,450 would be the maximum to qualify for acutely low. Extremely low would be within that range there, the 17,000 to 39,000 range. And then what affordable rents pegged off of the maximum of those two categories would be. So that would be, you know, if you're at the lower end of those income spectrums, it also makes it a bit tougher, but that would be the max rent. This proposal and project does recommend looking into additional rent subsidies for tenants as well. I also wanted to summarize, because I know I've provided a lot of information and I know this evening in, in a lot of detail, and I'm happy to, to answer questions, but I also just wanted to provide a quick project summary. So the, the city resources that are being asked and required is the land, which is 555 Kelly, and a portion of the, well, all of the, the surface parking lot at the south end of the Ted Adcock Community Center would be the city contribution. The population that's targeted, targeted is farmworkers with housing and ground floor support services on the project. And then just to reiterate the development format, there, there is four stories. There's currently a setback along Kelly Avenue, and there is the inclusion of parking and common spaces and laundry, as well as bike parking and management offices, as well as the resource center. And, and overall, we just want to make sure that council knows that we welcome feedback on the overall project, as well as we move forward through every stage. So the, just to reiterate, the recommendation before City Council is to declare the city-owned property as exempt surplus as pursuant to California State Law and the Surplus Lands Act, as well as authorize the city manager to execute the exclusive negotiations agreement with Mercy Housing. We will return, of course, for the pre-development loan agreement, as well as the disposition and development lease agreement. The pre-development loan agreement within 60 days of the execution of the ENA, and within a year, staff would return with the development agreement. I also wanted to reiterate that, or excuse me, sorry, and announce that I'm also joined this evening. We have Mercy Housing staff available to assist with questions, and staff will remain available for questions as well, and I will return it to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from council members before we see if there's public comment? Okay, seeing none. Jessica, would you like to open this up to public comment?
Yes, our first comment is from Julieta. Julieta, if you could unmute yourself. Okay, come back. Carolina?
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches, señora. Una vez más, si puede mantener sus trozos de información manejables para que pueda interpretar y todo mundo escuche lo que tenga que decir, ¿de acuerdo?
De acuerdo.
Adelante, por favor.
Mi pregunta es, si esperaremos a más o casas accesibles para nosotros, los trabajadores esenciales después de este proyecto?
So, good evening. My question is, is do we have to wait for more affordable housing for essential workers?
Algo más, señor.
Porque no sé si ellos saben que no solo somos una población de, no sé, 45 personas, si escuché bien. Somos más de 45 personas que estamos solicitando viviendas o necesitamos una vivienda. Adem, oh, siga.
Okay, so I, I, I don't know if you know this, but I think I heard something about, you know, 40, 45, but I want you to know that we are more than 45. There's a lot of people applying for these affordable housing.
Personas que estamos viviendo asinadas en, en cuartos porque no hay viviendas y no tenemos el salario para pagar más. Y si estamos hablando de este proyecto, es un proyecto a largo plazo, muy largo plazo. Y las personas que van a ser beneficiadas son personas mayores de edad. Y nosotros, ¿dónde quedamos? Las personas que estamos trabajando todavía.
So, you know, the, there's people that are, you know, in situations where they're living in a room and because, you know, there's no housing, and we don't have the salaries to get any more housing. So if we're talking about this point, this seems to be something that's on a very long term here, and it's only for older people, but what about the us? What about the people that are still working?
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, Eliana.
Buenas noches, tu vuelta.
Buenas noches, señora. Una vez más, si usted puede mantener sus trozos de información manejables, de esa manera le puedo traducir todo y todo mundo puede escuchar lo que tenga que decir, ¿sí?
Muchas gracias. Mi pregunta es...
Adelante.
¿Por qué trabajadores de agricultura y los que estamos pidiendo la ayuda como trabajadores esenciales?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm gonna ask her to please get closer to the mic, everyone, because it's difficult for me to hear.
Señorita, puede arrimarse un poquito más al micrófono porque se me dificulta escuchar bien.
¿Sí? ¿Me escuchas?
Oh, perfecto. Muchísimas gracias.
Sí. Ah, mi pregunta es, ¿por qué trabajadores de agricultura y los que estamos pidiendo la ayuda? Somos trabajadores de bajos ingresos. Eso incluye trabajadores esenciales. Somos trabajadores esenciales, no nada más agricultura.
Ajá. Un momento. So my question is, why, you know, if it's just ag workers? Because, you know, we're asking low-income workers that are all essential, not just the ag workers.
Somos, somos, son personas que tienen familias, viviendo, este niño viviendo en un cuarto, y se les está ofreciendo la ayuda, la ayuda a agricultores mayores, siendo que hay muchos apartamentos aquí para personas mayores. Y otra ayuda para personas mayores, ¿y qué pasa con nuestros hijos? Teniendo hijos, teniendo familia. ¿Qué pasa con, qué pasa en ese punto? Eso, eso es lo que la mayoría de nosotros somos lo que estamos pidiendo, ayuda para nuestros hijos. A lo mejor están ustedes entendiendo mal o se les llegó la información mal.
Esperense, Eliana, un momento, por favor. Déjale traduzco eso.
So, you know, we are people, like, there's families living in one room with, with kids, and it seems like all of the help is just for older, you know, ag workers. There's many places or many apartments for older people, but what about us? What about our kids?
Adelante.
Nuestros hijos que fueron criados en Half Moon Bay, que han tenido, que ya tienen sus familias, tienen sus hijos, siguen viviendo con, con, en sus, en casa de sus padres porque no pueden, no pueden pagar una renta.
Sí. Momento.
So our kids, our own kids that were raised in Half Moon Bay, that have their own kids, you know, can't, have to continue living with their parents at home because they can't pay or afford the rent?
Nosotros somos personas que, que, que somos las que andamos caminando en la calle pidiendo ayuda. Somos madres necesitadas, este, que, que pedimos la ayuda, este, y no nada más. Yo no lo pido para mí, la pido para todas las personas necesitadas, no nada más las personas mayores. O sea, queremos ayuda para todas las personas de bajos ingresos. Este, y sí, la verdad, esos apartamentos ocupamos más apartamentos, 45 apartamentos son muy pocos.
Okay. Momento.
So, you know, we are the people that are, you know, moving around, walking the streets, asking, you know, we're moms who, who need, who are asking for help. This shouldn't be just for older people, but for all low income families. We need more. Forty-five is just not enough.
Eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
That's all. Thank you very much.
And next we have Kimberly Williams.
Hi, Mayor and City Council members. This is Kimberly Williams, speaking tonight as a community member. I applaud this project. I think it's wonderful. I think it will go a long way towards solving some of these issues. And certainly my heart goes out to all the people who need housing. I have been in that position and hopefully I won't find myself in that position again someday, but you never know. So my only concern with this project is that the four stories is that would be the tallest building in Half Moon Bay, I think. And I wonder if that would set a precedent by which taller buildings would begin to be built. And if so, then I think I would like you to look at how you could reduce the height of the building, but still preserve the number of units on the this, the square footage of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Belinda Ariaga.
Hi, thank you, City Council. Everyone tonight, thanks for this wonderful work that you're doing on behalf of our community. I am really grateful for the funding that was given by the Board of Supervisors today. I happen to be at the meeting today, sharing about the future and the Latino community of the coast side. It was a really powerful opportunity. I was invited to present today and told them about all the amazing work that your leadership is bringing to the community and the work of the community themselves to advocate and to move forward along with our programs of the coast side. I do want to highlight that this is one big step forward for our community and for those that have worked so hard on behalf of all of us, for our food and for our health. And I, I really want to thank Mercy Housing for stepping up as a partner to say yes. This is not an easy task for someone to take on this effort, especially given that it is a smaller housing project in size of what they're usually used to. So I really want to honor that and, and to thank all of you, City Council, for your leadership, your care, your cariño and all that you're showing. I also wanted to thank Matthew, our city manager, who has been a key leader in just being able to listen to us, to hear the community and to consider the needs and, and be able to support. So thank you. But I also want to echo other sentiments of the Latino community because every day I am seeing the rise in cost of living here. But not only that, the disparities in being able to even get an apartment. Everything is turned over now to mainly realtors and that requires an even higher level of deposit. The other day we were looking for a family and just to get into first and last month was over $10,000 when a family only makes 20,000 a year. So this is impossible. And as one of the speakers said, the time is ticking. Children are being raised here and of course they need to have safe homes to live in. So I still would like to request that there is a creative way to think about how do we find more rentals for low income families here on the coast side? Because it is very limited and it's also very exclusive. So I don't know how to make that happen, but I am praying and I continue to echo that it's one step at a time and this is one big step. Y estamos escuchando a todos los demás que están aquí. Es un primer paso, pero no vamos a estar vencidos. Vamos a seguir adelante pidiendo por todos. Porque cada persona merece tener una oportunidad como este y estamos aquí por ustedes. So I'm just sharing that. You know, we're also continuing to advocate for all the other families of children and those in the community to, to say that we hear them. And I just want to thank our greater Half Moon Bay Coastside community. I know that there's, you know, things that we we all see, but I feel like people have really come together to put their arms around one another during such a critical time. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Belinda. Next speaker is Mary Vega.
Y buenas noches a todos.
Buenas noches, Mary Vega, este.
Yo también tengo la misma inquietud que las demás personas porque es un gran trabajo el que se ha logrado.
So I have the same concern as everybody else on the end. This is great work that we've achieved.
Pero lamentablemente la necesidad de viviendas día a día es, es mayor.
But unfortunately, the housing situation keeps increasing.
Y creo que sí es necesario buscar más lugares y para todas las personas que realmente lo estamos necesitando.
I think it's important to find more spaces and for all the people that are actually needing them.
Pero eso no quita que les agradecamos el gran trabajo que están haciendo.
But that doesn't mean we don't appreciate the great work that you guys are doing.
Y esperamos que cada vez podamos lograr cosas más increíbles para todas las personas.
And we're hoping that each time we make some incredible strides for all.
Gracias a todos por su gran trabajo.
Thank you all for your great work.
Y nosotros seguiremos también aquí esperando que se pueda lograr algo más rápido.
And we will continue to wait to see if we can do something in, in a faster manner.
Gracias a todos.
Thank you all.
Gracias, Mary. Anay Vasquez. Anay.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches, Anay. ¿Cómo le va?
Bien, bien. Gracias a Dios.
Adelante, por favor.
A mí me gustaría pues agregar de que paran en cuenta a todas, a todas las personas que tenemos hijos que vivimos en un solo cuarto.
So I would like to add to take all of the people that have kids that are living in one room.
Que a veces es muy cómodo, estresante porque ellos quieren correr, jugar. Y hay personas que son muy delicadas y tenemos que mantener a nuestros hijos sentados.
So sometimes it's very uncomfortable and stressful because they want to run and play. And maybe some people are a little too uptight or sensitive. And so we have to keep our kids, you know, properly sitting down.
Y es muy estresante tanto como para los niños como para nosotros como adultos.
So it's very stressful for the kids and us as adults as well.
Así que ojalá que pudieran tomar en cuenta todo esto, el sufrimiento que está generizando a todos los niños que vi, que viven así.
So I want you guys to really take into account like all of the suffering that the kids are going through that are living this way.
Es todo. Gracias.
That's all. Thank you. If, if I may, I'm just going to make one more announcement for people that may want to make a comment in Spanish to raise their hand at this moment. Mayor Rodeck.
So en este momento, para todas las personas que quieran hacer un comentario acerca de este punto del orden del día, ahora es el momento en hacerlo. Si pueden alzar la mano virtual, háganlo ahorita. Muchas gracias.
Rocío Ávila.
Buenas noches, miembros del consejo.
So good evening, council members.
Quiero dar las gracias a Mercy Housing, a ALAS y a todas las personas que han apoyado este proyecto.
So I want to thank Mercy Housing, ALAS, and all of the people that have supported this project.
Es un proyecto que hemos estado esperando y vamos a esperar más proyectos para toda la comunidad que lo necesitamos. Pero muchas gracias y todos podemos, todos juntos, todo se puede.
So this is a project that we've been waiting for and we'll continue to wait for more projects. Because when we're all in it together, we can, we can achieve things.
My Jill Alcas conoce de nuestras historias y sabemos que también ustedes, miembros del consejo, han escuchado. Así que esperamos que nos pueden ayudar en todo lo posible que se pueda hacer para mantener en un hogar bueno a nuestras familias.
Un momento.
So Mike, Jill, Ikis, they, they know our stories and you council members have heard our stories too. So you know, maybe you can help us with all you can do to have a good home for our families.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias, Rocío. I believe that is it, Mayor.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the council for questions and, and or comments. Who would like to start? Harvey. Followed by the Vice Mayor.
When we bought this land and house five years ago, we really didn't know what we were going to do with it. I am totally impressed by what ALAS and Mercy Housing have done to actually use this for the benefit of people who really, really need it. Every council meeting, we hear these horrible stories about how difficult it is for low income workers on the coast side to live and it's, it's really, it, it gets to me and I assume the other council members. I wish to hell we could do something. We're doing the best we can. It's really, really difficult to produce affordable housing, but trust me, I think all the council members are doing everything that is within our power to make more housing available. I hope that we can try to work on the rents like Belinda was talking about. It's, it's just heartbreaking and I, I don't know what else to say, but certainly this particular project gets full support of me. Because I think it's really a worthy project to help our farmer community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Rarbox said. The, the critical situation that so many of our Half Moon Bay fellow citizens are living in, crowded, expensive, poorly kept up housing is a disgrace and it's, it's something that all of us have been saddened about and are working very hard to try to rectify. I think that this is a first step and I think that's the only way to look at it. This is a wonderful opportunity. I think Mercy Housing and ALAS and all of our, our city planners and our our city manager, everybody else involved in this project are excited about it and with good reason. I have a technical question and that is to ask, in the preliminary plan, what is the square footage allocated to office space as opposed to housing? We talked about it's less than twenty percent. But what is it? Can somebody give me that figure?
Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to assist with, with that answer. So I don't have the exact metrics in front of me. I believe the, the resource center. It looks like Tim just signed on as well. So I'll hand it over to him in just a second. I believe the resource center comes in at roughly around two thousand square feet plus a management office that I believe is, is I'll, I'll hand it off to Tim for that, but a few hundred square feet would be my assumption. So I, I think the office space is quite minimal as part of the grand total and I'll, I'll hand it off to, to Tim Dunn from Mercy Housing for some of those specifics and, and Tim, thank you for your assistance.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't have all the, the figures in front of me, but yes, I, what Mike said is correct that the office space or the community space for all us is about two thousand square feet and offices, the property management offices are several hundred feet. And, you know, this is very preliminary and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be refining that. I think, I don't have the square footages of the upper floors in front of me, but I would the, the units would probably be, the actual housing units would probably be somewhere totaling sixteen to twenty thousand square feet for the, for the actual residential units, not including the, you know, the circulation, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question. And this question is to Tim from Mercy Housing. So earlier Mike put up some numbers and, you know, it had the city putting in two million dollars, which comes from its pre-existing housing fund, just so folks know that. And then there's the twenty, he's talking about twenty million dollars worth of bank loans. And that's something that Mercy Housing puts together, correct? The rest of that funding, not just through loans, grants, foundation money, you know, assortment of sources. So so I just really want to put, you know, a highlight that without a partner like Mercy Housing in a town the size of Half Moon Bay, the funding for a project like this doesn't happen. That's just a reality. And how much would you say, you know, for the forty units? I remember there was a number about how much basically it costs, you know, to build each unit. Was it around six hundred thousand dollars or something? Is that close to my recollection?
That, that would be accurate, yes.
Right. So, you know, just to really put a emphasis on what Councilmember Rarback was saying, yeah. This is a real issue. We have a huge disparity in available housing. It's incredibly expensive to build something like this. So when we have a partner like Mercy that's willing to work with us, you know, that's terrific. And so you know, it's a good step. There's a lot more need out there than, you know, what's available and how quickly we can build this. So I just want to, you know, really state the reality and what those numbers look like, where the money comes from. So I know we talked about it in the past, but I just figured new folks are coming on and just want to remind folks that this is how it works. And, you know, that's where we look to partners like Mercy Housing. Mid Penn has also been a partner in the past that's built. Mid Penn has also been a partner in the past that's built fantastic housing. And it's really high-quality housing. If you look at all the projects around the city for seniors and for low-income housing, it's really well-built and it's lasted. And Mercy Housing and Mid Penn also administer the housing. So, um, yeah, I just can't say enough about how valuable those partnerships are. So thank you again for working with us.
Thank you, Robert. I just want to reiterate what others have alluded to and that is, you know, these projects just don't happen without partnerships and collaboration. It seems like anything anymore. All of the big problems we're facing here on the coast, whether it's, you know, sea level rise or the status of agriculture or housing, it's dependent on people working together and building relationships and interacting, you know, in a civil teamwork fashion and, and to sustain it over several years, right? So I was looking at the timeline here and it kind of looks aggressive. At, at first I thought, you know, maybe, you know, optimistic, but I'm kind of thinking, looking at the economy and looking at the very, very high probability of recession, that, you know, I think time is of the essence here. I don't know, maybe recessionary times would make it cheaper and easier to build. I don't know about that, but I'm thinking, um, yeah, I think timing is going to be really important to, to follow the market and, you know, and adjust accordingly. But I, I think the timeline is going to prove to be sort of an important factor here. And I agree, you know, we're lucky to have very skilled partners with deep portfolios. I don't think we can do it otherwise, but, you know, that said, I, I think we need to look at other things besides 100% affordable housing. It's a very difficult project to put together and fund. So I think we should be looking at some of the newer concepts about, you know, social housing, you know, where you have mixes of market-rate housing and below-market rate housing to help things, you know, pencil out. And I agree with Harvey, we probably have to take a look at rents again. Looks like, you know, rent control is coming back in some communities in California. So I, I don't think we should limit ourselves to just 100% affordable, you know, developments. We're going to need to look at, you know, a mix, a market mix that would make it easier for, for profit builders to, you know, to jump in. And again, going back to considering again, community land trusts. I think we ruled it out several years ago, but it's probably worth looking at again. So let's not, you know, just limit ourselves and overly focus on these, you know, 100% affordable, totally subsidized housing developments. You know, plus I think it's better for all of us too to live, you know, um, in a diverse setting. You know, we don't, only one live with other teachers or other essential workers or other singles. You know, we want to live in mixed environments where we can interact and learn from each other. So again, I think that supports, which is sort of a, a bigger, bigger beast than the original inclusionary housing was, but I think we're going to need to branch out because, yeah, people are desperate. And I think, you know, I don't see it, the whole situation improving radically in the near term. So we just have to, you know, chip away at it. So could we put the, um, the recommendations back up on the screen so that someone could, you know, make a motion?
I move that we declare property owned by the city as exempt surplus land. Wait a minute. Took away my screen. As exempt surplus land pursuant to government code 54221 F1A, 54221B and 37364 located at 555 Kelly Avenue, APN 056-150-200 and a portion of the property located at 535 Kelly Avenue, APN 056-150-220, the site and depicted in Exhibit A of the resolution as the city intends to lease the property for the development of affordable housing. And two, that we authorize the city manager to execute an exclusive negotiations agreement between the city and Mercy Housing California to enable pre-development activities to be undertaken for an affordable housing development project on the site and provide for a period of time in which to negotiate a development agreement between the parties.
Enthusiastic second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownson?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember, who minute? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And could someone text Joaquin that we are teaching? We're taking a five-minute break though, so we will be back here at approximately 8:42. And then we'll get on to our next item before I suspect there might be a fair amount of public comment. So we'll see you in five minutes.
Thank you.
Hopefully Joaquin will rejoin us. Um, Jessica, did you hear back from Joaquin?
Yes, he has. He should be joining. I told him five-minute break when we left, so.
All right, so I'll just start. So the next item is Item 3B. It's a study session. The feeding of wilds. So John, are you presenting this?
I will do a very brief presentation in honor of Mr. Olem's request. I will not even do a PowerPoint on this one, so I'll be very brief. As the mayor indicated, this is intended as a study session and a workshop and really an opportunity for the community to identify and weigh in on, on this issue. As indicated in the staff report on August 16th, the council authorized staff to place this item on a future agenda. And this is that future agenda. Again, tonight, there is no specific action requested other than to consider the input from the community and if deemed appropriate to direct staff accordingly. And that could be to proceed to some form of ordinance preparation to, to address this issue. As indicated, this started, I think, from, from a, from some neighbor, kind of from a neighbor dispute, but has been shown to involve a little bit broader spectrum than just that neighbor dispute. Also, um, this, the, the information attached to the report really is focused on ravens in particular and the Corvus group of genus, which includes ravens and crows and blue, and blue jays. But from staff's perspective, we think that it warrants at least some conversation as it relates to other wildlife. And you can pick any number of wildlife, but inclusive of that, we know that there are some issues out in the community or have heard of issues in the community with folks feeding raccoons and other, other wildlife. We know that there are several folks who are also actively feeding the feral cat population, which is having some detrimental impacts to the native wildlife and, and the, the birding, the bird population out there. So from that perspective, it's, I would say it's a pretty open conversation tonight. And we're happy to take any direction ultimately offered and, and move on from there. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, if I, if I can just add, John and I were able to meet with some of these neighbors and just learn a bit about some of their concerns. But subsequent to that, we've talked to other experts in the community and, and on, in the county. I've had several conversations with the Peninsula Humane Society, who obviously, their mission is to protect animals, both pets and wildlife. And they have a whole section on their website about living with wildlife, both in urban areas and more rural areas like ours. And they are unequivocal about the impacts, the damaging impacts to the environment, to the animals themselves from feeding wildlife. And so they've, they've offered to provide resources and support as we explore this issue. It, it, this is a tough issue because obviously there's a connection to nature that people might feel when they're feeding animals. But ultimately, feeding animals has widespread impacts on the, the animals themselves and the environment. And I think that's, that's part of what John was bringing to light is it's not just the birds. It's, it's all wildlife and impacts are across all of our flora and fauna here on the coast.
And I just want to add, you know, that wildlife can be disease vectors as well. You know, the county recently was, you know, discussing the issue of avian bird flu, avian flu. We know about West Nile virus. There, there was a, a disease affecting small songbirds last year. And then they told people to stop, you know, putting water in your bird baths. And we know that raccoons, for instance, they get on your roof and they deposit pellets in your gutters. But it can, you know, carry disease. They carry a disease that can affect, you know, liver disease and other animals. And, and if you're feeding them, you're attracting them. And under the fish and game cup, that's, that's harassment. And you're actually not just feeding them and making them a nuisance, but you're also modifying their behavior, which then becomes very difficult, you know, to change. So it is, it's, it's an ecosystem issue. It has, you know, system-wide impacts. And people may feel like they're doing something nice for the animals, but in fact, you know, it's, it's harmful to the, um, the wildlife, you know, as, you know, individual members of their populations, but also population life. And not just their population, but populations of other animals. So it's something to think about. And I also spoke with the residents and I, I have some familiarity with the problem in other neighborhoods. So I thought it was worth, you know, at least having a discussion about it. And an ordinance may or may not be the, the answer, but let's hear from people. And are there any questions before we take public comment from, any questions from councilmembers to staff? Okay, let's see who we've got in the, the public forum here.
Thanks. Our first speaker is Julia Reposa. Julia, if you could unmute.
Hello, I support some sort of regulation. I don't know if it should be an ordinance or if it should be some sort of a, a warning and education campaign. I think before we look at an ordinance, oops, perhaps we could do more for public education, have educational signs throughout the, the city, throughout the neighborhoods. I, I think people just don't know enough about nature and that there's probably a lot of people that wouldn't be perpetrators and offenders if they fully understood the consequences of what they do. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. Kim?
Good evening. I want to thank you for Mayor, City Council, City staff for listening to our concerns regarding the wildlife in our neighborhoods, the public and private spaces. My family and I have lived in the Alsace-Lorraine neighborhood for 30 years, including the last four years at our current location. One of the many aspects my husband and I enjoy about living in this neighborhood is the abundance and variety of wildlife. We have, uh, we have seen hawks, harriers, kites, herons, owls, fox and coyotes, just to name a few. And going forward, I'll just share my observances that we've noticed over the last two years. About two year, you, two years ago, we began to notice a change in the balance. We noticed a large kit or flock of pigeons regularly perched on the top of our rooftop as well as our, our suns. About two dozen on each house. Soon they moved in and built nests under the solar panels on each of our homes. Their droppings were everywhere on the rooftop, our decks, as well as numerous broken pigeon eggs. This unhealthy mess was constant in our fam, for our family and our domestic animals. This also attracted rats and mice. Also, the pigeons' constant cooing disturbed our working from home in 2020. Finally, in November, December, we had had enough and we hired a company to come clean up the pigeons' mess, remove the nests, repair the damage they caused, install, installed unsightly spikes on top of our roofs, both the roofs, and installed barriers so the pigeons could no longer nest underneath the solar panels. The cost for both homes was more than $10,000. We incur additional costs to repair the spikes after significant rainstorms as well as regular maintenance. Also, in addition, costs include the removal of other pests that the pigeons have attracted. It seemed okay for a while and then the conspiracy of rais, ravens arrived. We noticed a few, fewer hawks, owls, kites, herons and harriers and an increase in pigeons and ravens. Sadly, the unkindness of ra, ra, ravens has changed the balance of nature in our public and private spaces. I have observed the rays and ravens harassing the hawks and heron as the raptors hunt and feed. In 2020, we were away for a weekend and the, and the ravens ate holes and removed stuffing from our outdoor seat cushions to create nests. While out on a walk in the neighborhood, I observed a neighbor feeding the ravens by hand and this can't be good for the spa, species. Also, there were as many as 50 ravens in our cypress tree at one point. And one only need walked through our neighborhood and noticed that many neighbors have had to put spikes up to, to, to have the pigeons not perch. It's a serious imbalance to nature is occurring in our public and private spaces here. And I have to believe that this is due to the unnatural feeding of these wild birds. This unnatural feeding is unhealthy for humans and wildlife, is costly for human, household owners and is creating a serious imbalance of nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Our next speaker is Kristela.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if this is limited to just birds or all wildlife. But, you know, we do have an issue of a very, very sweet, sweet lady who feeds the feral cats under the bridge. And I know it's been pointed out to her many times what the damage that she's causing in the way that she does it. She leaves massive amounts of to-go bin trash, even so far as full-on baskets that she was using to lower. even so far as full-on baskets that she was using to lower them there, were getting stuck down there. So the environmental damage that's being done is much more outweighs the cats that are being fed could actually probably fend for themselves just fine, although now they've learned to wait for her. So they are also learning a bad habit about being fed by humans. And there's plenty of little creatures down there that they should naturally be eating. So I do know that there it's caused kerfuffles in people meeting her at the bridge, trying to get her to stop and there being some harsh words and things like that. And so I do think that for some people, education is not going to persuade them from feeding the animals because they just love them and they want to help them. So I I think that some sort of light ordinance would go a long way to at least giving a way for city staff or the sheriff or whoever needs to deal with somebody who is feeding somebody, feeding an animal and creating a problem, to give them some kind of recourse. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista Lynn. I have no other hands raised, Mayor. Oh, one, hold on. Oh, they disappeared. Almer?
Hi, I would just like to add that with dealing with our neighbor, we reached out to the city on ways to curtail this behavior. And then suggested we contact a group in Burnland game about pigeons, and we did. They came out to speak with the neighbor. The behavior did not cease. They talked to, suggested we speak to the Fish and Wildlife. They did that. They came out and spoke to the neighbor several times as well, and the behavior continues. And it just feels like our hands are tied. There seems not no other recourse except for education, which seems to go nowhere. And just I'd like to add the waste of water that's involved with cleaning the duck surfaces and our cars and our driveways. So we have a sanitary place for us to exist and for our children to play in our own, on our own property. So that's another issue that's caused by the feeding of the wild birds. Thank you.
Thank you. And Margaret Cosette?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the mayor, Matthew and John for meeting with a group of concerned citizens this past summer. And I also want to clarify that I am a planning commissioner, but I am speaking as a citizen. So I'd just like to point that out. And thank you for the presentation that you gave John this evening and Matthew. I wanted to just say that I recognize that dealing with this problem of feeding wildlife is probably going to take a multifaceted approach to solving the problem. I think education is a great way to go because I do believe there are a lot of people who don't understand the negative impact of feeding wildlife and on the impact on the ecosystem. We do have a strong effort in Half Moon Bay to protect birds that are near endangered. We have snowy plover on the beach. Ravens are known to go and eat the snowy plover eggs, and they also eat the little chicks. Education's a great way to go, but I think in in our case in Half Moon Bay, we do probably need an ordinance to allow the city staff or Peninsula Humane Society or whoever would enforce it to have a tool to enforce, you know, the ban on feeding of wildlife. I don't think for some, education is going to be the way to go. The feeding of the wildlife has caused an imbalance in the population of birds. We have about maybe 40 to 50 ravens on the bluff, and it is causing a public health and safety issue with the amount of bird dew that is all over the neighborhood. The other thing I want to point out is I am a docent at Anjo Nuevo State Park. It's a 4,000 acre park, but people typically hang out along the coast. We do have a beach where people picnic. We have picnic areas and we also have a reserve. And people know that they are not supposed to eat in the reserve, and we don't feed the animals in this park. And we do have a couple ravens, which is probably natural. But we also have many hawks. We have bald eagles. We have all kinds of other birds that fly around and hunt in the park, and they're not being harassed by those that are feeding the birds constantly. So I do believe that stronger action is going to need to be taken to stop some of this unnatural feeding of the wildlife. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Margaret. And next we have Carrie.
Hi, my name's Carrie, and I just wanted to agree with the neighbors that have spoken that while education, I think, will be great because we do have lots of visitors in the area, especially on our busy weekends, and I think it's important for people to be educated. But I also think we're past the education piece with some of our neighbors. I've seen at least two that have been spoken to by, you know, multiple people. And as our neighbor said, people have come to their homes and talked to them, and it hasn't stopped the feeding, which is unfortunate. And I just also wanted to thank the council for taking the time and addressing this issue. I think it is important and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. No other hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the council for comments or questions, direction. This is a sort of a workshop. You know, we can talk options, which is no action, which is something that's education focused or something that's allows for enforcement plus maybe in combination with with education. I I think the the speakers have hit on something that's kind of difficult to overcome. And it the feeding of the birds, it seems to me it is beyond regular back and forth, you know, negotiation, interaction. Seems to be almost like a compulsion. And I don't know if more education, more visitation by experts and things would actually, you know, change the pattern. But I I'm certainly open to ideas, and I certainly don't want to, you know, take a direction that might overly burden staff without producing any results either. But I think something has to give because what's been tried to date is not working. I do think that the the factors who are doing this with the ravens, at least, are very few. One would think that it would be an easy nut to crack, but not so much. I'm going to call on Robert and then the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, from the way the problem's been described, because when I first heard about it, you know, I was thinking, well, you know, how would you enforce, et cetera? But then I remembered my experiences with folks and a couple of people in neighborhood feeding raccoons. It only took a couple of people doing that. And all of a sudden, it was like tripling, quadrupling the number of raccoons in the neighborhood, and they were going under people's houses and building nests and very hard to get rid of them. And it sounds like in this case, not only are there just a few people, but they're all well-known to neighbors. So to point out the unfortunate people it needs to be enforced against is actually would be very easy. Sounds like some of them are homeowners or whatever. I would put a, you know, fairly high, actually violation fee around it. And if it's outdoors, let's say on the trail, I know there's a lot of ravens there. I don't know if it's an issue there. I think signs would be helpful, you know, don't feed the ravens. And, you know, it's kind of like leash your dog on the trail. People tend to, as a community, enforce that. You know, you see someone with a dog running around, people say, hey, you know, you got to leash your dog. It gives people the confidence to say that if there's a sign, you know, that says, hey, don't feed the birds here. So, yeah, I think it's unconscionable that people have been approached many times by their neighbors, pointed out, you know, bringing in outside experts, saying this is what you're causing and still continue that behavior and basically creating a public nuisance. Not to mention all the other things you mentioned in terms of vectors and disease and someone telling me they, well, anyway, yeah, especially ravens, you know, they're kind of friends ornithologist tell me they're kind of like the juvenile delinquents of the bird kingdom in some ways. So often just go and be bullies to other birds, you know, for no particular reason. So, yeah, so for all the reasons stated, it sounds like people have been warned. And the best way to handle that is to, you know, have a strong ordinance that could be enforced and sounds like people know who it needs to be enforced against. So I support it.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I am also in favor of an ordinance. I think that an ordinance alone is inadequate. I think education is going to be critical and signage is going to be critical. But I think those two things can be done. And I think that maybe a visit from the Humane Society to a council meeting to explain exactly why we shouldn't be doing the feeding of wild animals and wild birds. But I do believe that beyond education, we need an ordinance to protect people when those of us don't believe what the experts say. And there are going to be a certain number of people who don't buy into that, who will not take the the offered education and believe it. So I think we need an ordinance, and I'm I'm happy to support the writing of an ordinance.
Okay. Now, Joaquin or Harvey? Joaquin?
Well, I know we care about our, you know, wildlife. And I think, you know, I've seen I've seen people feed different, different animals around the community. And, you know, I've observed, you know, them feeding, you know, going to different places, taking the time, especially feeding the the feral cats, you know, in different areas, you know, in the community, and they take their time and they carry bags of cat food in their vehicles. And I think, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't see them doing on a on a bad way. I think it kind of helps their their mental health, you know, caring for somebody. And I and I understand that, you know. Yes, like many of us have a, you know, a pet, you know, doll or cat or birds have died in our home or something. You know, maybe they see themselves, you know, as useful, you know, feeding other animals. But again, they might not understand, you know, how damaging that could be, you know, to other animal, you know, species. The cats, you know, breeding raccoons, you know, multiplying. I mean, I I do notice the ravens, you know, the beach, the trails and, but it's just to be able to enforce that, like, you know, Robert mentioned, you know, it'd be difficult to do with an ordinance. Yes, like we do about the dogs on the leash. But, you know, I think a little bit of education from from people that work with this, you know, wildlife, Humane Society, give us a presentation. Right now, you know, thinking about an ordinance, my help, there's a a consequence, you know, to feeding animals. And I don't want to make it too harsh. Like I mentioned, I know people, and especially one person, you know, that she loves to feed, you know, the birds, you know, in an area in Half Moon Bay. But I also see her, like, you know, the she looks she looks forward to doing that. You know, it's like her highlight of the day, you know, to go feed these birds. But, you know, I don't think she understands how that how that's affecting, you know, her neighbors. But maybe a little bit of education and ordinance about what is happening, you know, will do. The ravens, they come and go, you know. The ravens were going for a while, they came back again. I don't know if you remember about seven years ago, the ravens were picking on the rubber, you know, around the windshield of some vehicles and the windshield wipers. So they were destroying, you know, a lot of the rubber on on vehicles, I mean, around the Bay Area, not just in Half Moon Bay, but it was around the Bay Area. You know, some time ago, I remember that. But let's do an ordinance, you know, I'm a supporter of that. With birds, it's a lot of a lot of diseases that they carry, especially, you know, for people, farmers that have chickens, you know, a place, you know, their flock and few years back, there was a lot of, there was a bird, no flu, that actually a lot of birds have to be put down, a lot, a lot of chickens. You know, I mean, talking about thousands of chickens, you know, getting killed because of this, you know, this disease that was spread by by birds, by wild birds. You know, we don't think about the consequence of feeding, you know, feeding birds, you know, how it can affect, you know, the the business, you know, the economy. But I'm a supporter of, you know, doing an ordinance and bringing in a specialist to give us, you know, more education about it, about feeding wildlife and birds.
Thank you, Joaquin. Now, Harvey?
Until I saw the staff report, I honestly was not aware of this issue. I'm just getting to terms with the pros and cons. I really can't speak directly to any personal knowledge of the harm of feeding wildlife. So I'm not going to comment. In general, I'm not in favor of intrusive ordinances, but I just have to cognitate about this one, and I'm not going to make any other public comments until I think more about it. Thank you.
So I I liked what Joaquin had to say about you know, the sort of compassion he had for the people, for many of the people who who feed animals, that there's a, you know, a human move there. And I liked what Robert said about, you know, an ordinance that would set sort of, you know, a high, a painful sign to try to, you know, get at it. I think I'm in agreement on the need for an ordinance. I I spent a couple of hours on Saturday looking out a window and watching a raven Harris, a young juvenile male, red-tailed hawk. And the person I was with said it had been going on for several days between the two of them. And I I've seen it walking out on the bluff too. So I'm I'm in favor of the ordinance approach. But I would, you know, in in keeping with Joaquin's sentiment, perhaps you have a, you know, a grace period initially where we do, you know, some educating and some outreach to people and 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 hope to make, you know, inroads there before we actually start enforcing. And I agree, I think enforcement is probably going to need to be, you know, only very limited. But I I think it needs to be done. It just, you know, I I've seen it, it it definitely is a problem. I don't know how much we want to put into education. I think some education is necessary. I don't know about signs, but certainly some outreach from the part of the city. And, you know, presentation at the city council would be good more in the community news. We we did post something a couple of months ago, just alerting We, we did post something a couple of months ago, just alerting people to the problem and it's been reposted a couple of times. So I, I think that's, that's good, but, um, I would suggest we look at the, the samples that are in the packet. I think it's Pismo Beach and, um, Colma, there may be others. And, uh, but I think we don't, we don't want it to be, um, too low, uh, a penalty. I think it is something that's, it gives people pause. So I'm in agreement with, uh, four of my council members, having Harvey. Maybe he's on the fence a bit, but. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm wondering if part of the education could be done by inviting the SPCA or someone to have a booth at the Pumpkin Festival or a booth at the, um, Main Street Thursdays. Just, um, somebody there to answer questions and to give out information. I think, um, it's an idea anyway.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Maybe farmer's market, you know, something like that. Um, the Pumpkin Festival is fast approaching, might not be enough time there, but certainly, I think it would be a good idea. And it seems like the more people are aware of it, um, the more sort of community response to the problems, you know, what will happen. I think somebody mentioned sort of, you know, the peer pressure of, you know, based on shared knowledge about the problem. So. I think we have our direction to stay. I see that John would like to comment. John?
Uh, only to say that, um, that Matthew is already, um, sort of initiated, um, working on with communications, sort of a, a program with the A-frame signs that we've done during COVID along the coastal trail, particularly kind of focus in those areas. So I think regardless of, I, I, I think I see where this is going, which is fine. Uh, but I think we're going to initiate work, at least from the coastal trail and the other areas to, to emphasize and focus there. And I'm sure our communications team can help us put together, um, some signage with that. And just to, um, say that we really, um, also advocate if, if you're moving toward that ordinance, that that, um, that the ordinance would include revisions to the parks and beaches, rules and regulations to include prohibitions there. That'll give us sort of the double, um, double suspenders, um, on, um, on the issue of enforcement, should we need to go to that point and deal with it. So, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be in your, in your, in any kind of action, but that's something that we would be also chasing around, which would include additional signage as part of our normal parks and beach signage, as well as what we envision, um, additional signage if this ordinance, um, ultimately is developed and, and adopted. So I think we're already starting on the education. Certainly I think Matthew is in agreement that, and had reached out to Peninsula Humane Society. So we're, we're already working with them and trying to, um, figure out a schedule for bringing, I think, um, their expertise into the mix.
Yeah, I think, you know, we start with education and then work can begin, you know, looking at, uh, ordinances. Um, but I, I, I do think starting the education is, is a good idea and thanks to staff for already sort of, uh, digging in. I guess my question would be, what do we want to include? Like, is it just ravens and, you know, crows, corvids? Is it seagulls? Is it, you know, all wild animals, including, you know, feral cats? Or do we want to just bring that discussion back, you know, when we visit a draft ordinance? Vice Mayor?
I wonder, yeah, I'm, I wonder if we could, um, ask the Humane Society to discuss all of the animals that could potentially be involved and why it's important to avoid feeding feral cats, why it's important to not feed pigeons, why it's important, you know, to not feed ravens, et cetera. Uh, and I'm sure there are other examples, but I'd like to hear from them myself, what, you know, what the reasons are, how does it disturb the life cycle? Maybe there are some wild animals that you can feed. I don't know. But I think education is critical and I think, uh, hearing from the experts is the way to go.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. Robert?
Yeah, I just want to really agree with the Vice Mayor. There's some real experts over at the Peninsula Humane Society, uh, San Mateo. And I'm sure, I'm sure they'd be happy to come and just continue the education. And by the way, I just also really want to thank the folks who came to the council meeting today and really talk about what was going on in their neighborhoods. And, um, it was a good education for me, certainly knowing just how bad the situation was. And I don't want to see Alssas Lorraine, um, you know, become a movie site for a remake of The Birds, you know? So let's kind of get this problem taken care of before it gets a lot worse. And, uh, so yeah, thank you all for coming and really telling us about what was going on.
And I think that, I think the neighbors pointed out something important and that is, so the problem isn't just, you know, caused by the person, you know, feeding the birds and the birds coming and hanging around their house. Because birds will sort of, you know, nest and roost near where they feed, right? And so it won't just be on that one house, it'll be on surrounding houses, right? They want to be close to the food source. And, and so they, they, they dig in in the whole surrounding area, right? And they, they create nuisances like people matter and that sort of thing. So it's not just the, the feeding activity, it's the associated, you know, roosting and nesting close to where the food source is. And that's what's causing those problems, like on people's roofs and then they solar panels and gutters and stuff like that. So it, it becomes a, you know, a local little system. So that's, that's the problem they're dealing with here. And I agree. Thanks for the residents for bringing that to our attention. Okay, I think that's it on that item. Um, do we have any commission and committee updates? This is.
Madam Mayor, we did have a recreation commission meeting last week. Uh, John, did you want to give that update?
Certainly I can do that. Um, the, uh, we had, uh, several, I think, really great items on the conversation, uh, table there and actions that are going to be coming to, uh, the council. Uh, one involved the, um, the, uh, Silvio's Bell, the, uh, Matthew, what's the?
Spirit of Life.
There you go. And, uh, that item will be coming back to you on the 18th with some recommendations, um, with accepting that donation and potentially looking at, um, its, um, potential location. Um, so that should be, um, a pretty extensive conversation, I'm guessing. Uh, we also had, uh, a donation action for, um, uh, art pieces at the library and we'll be bringing that forward. And Lisa's was, um, has been, um, Lopez Rossi has been spearheading that one. So I know that's something near and dear to her heart and that'll be coming, I believe, on the 18th as well. And then, um, the last major item of, uh, conversation was we had a workshop on Frenchman's Creek Park Phase Two. Um, good conversation, uh, good input. Um, and, um, we are working on following that item up with a, um, pop-up meeting out at the, um, park, um, and hoping to get the community members out. And we're looking at, um, trying to write up an E-News on that once we figure out a date. But we're definitely looking in October for that. Um, those were the primary, we, we did have some, um, great feedback, I think, on the, on the fest, the Summers End Festival, um, and, um, that I think was just an excellent event. Thank you to, um, Eddie, um, and, and the staff. They were running around all day, um, the public works, uh, maintenance, some of the staff were, were there at various times helping out. Um, and, uh, the, the friends who, uh, ran the beer and wine, um, area of that and everybody else that came out and supported, it was just, um, a fabulous event and it was great seeing, um, I know many of you folks out there and, uh, Silvio had a great, um, a great, um, and, you know, acknowledgement there. Thank you, Mayor Ruddock, for your, um, helping out as well. And, uh, so that was a good, um, good conversation as well, just a little bit of feedback to that point. And we're going to continue to work to, to make that even better next year, I'm sure. And, uh, so that, that, that's the, the meeting from the Rec Commission.
Thanks, John. And I think Jill has, uh, a report on Planning Commission?
Sure. Thank you, Matthew. Good evening. Um, I, I would like to also give a little update about the Architectural Advisory Committee. Uh, they met on September 22nd. Um, all three of our planners had a project. Um, this included our, uh, new assistant planner, O'Coee Wilson. O'Coee had her debut with Architectural Advisory Committee and they welcomed her warmly. And she did a great job presenting her, her first project to them. Um, hopefully you'll meet her soon. And of course, I think some of you have, have seen her at City Hall and, um, please, please, uh, reach out to her when you come through. Um, one of the highlights though of that meeting was a proposal from the East Coast Child Development Center at, uh, Highway One in Redondo Beach Road for an expansion. And, uh, there's quite a few steps in the entitlement process for that, but we just want you to note that it's, um, moving on ahead and was very, uh, well-revealed by the Architectural Advisory Committee. Uh, last week, the Planning Commission met in study session and, um, we, of course, uh, had a presentation and, uh, discussion, uh, with Michael Noche tonight. Um, Mike and I, uh, give, have an element session. And we were focused on housing sites, which, um, is getting pretty nitpicky and it's very, very important and highly relevant to all of the input that you've been receiving. And, um, so we, we appreciate that. Uh, over the fall, we'll be, um, having more, uh, sessions like that. We also will, um, be bringing a land use plan cleanup to the Planning Commission. Uh, we're going to give them a little overview of it. Uh, we've really enjoyed our brand new land use plan. We've been using it for a year and a half. And there's just a couple little things here and there that we've noticed. And, um, when you have a 500-page book, you, you might catch a couple things after the fact. And so we just, we want to, um, give it a polish and, um, have that done in a very transparent and open way. And then that will set the table for us to move forward with the implementation plan. So that's kind of a, uh, preheating the oven to, to get into that, that next part of the process. And I think that's, that's about it for now. Um, everybody's busy. The commission's working hard. Oh, I did want to, I'm sorry, I, I did want to note, um, the Hyatt project had a 60-day, um, circulation for the draft environmental impact report that ended, um, mid-September. Uh, we had on the order of a hundred, um, comments. We've been sorting them and, um, preparing, first going to prepare responses. It's going to take some time because the volume is high. And so we don't want anyone to think that we, um, missed their comment. Um, any comment that came in an email, we confirmed receipt. So if you know, if anybody says, I don't know if they got my, my email, I have them, uh, reach out to me. We'll, we'll make sure that we have it. Uh, but I, we were very diligent and tried to make sure that people, uh, had that loop closed. And that's for Grant. Thank you.
Both very meaty reports. Sounds like, uh, everybody's got a lot going on. Okay. Um, city council reports. Harvey?
Um, as usual, I attended the Midcoast Community Council meeting. Uh, I think if I were to report on just one item, they're working very diligently on a comment letter about the Cypress Point Affordable Housing Project in Moss Beach. Uh, a lot of concern, a lot of issues, um, that, uh, really are engaging that community. That's it.
It was very sad to learn about Harold. Hey, Mom.
That, that, yeah.
It's like I was doing a, 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 a story. Um, very active fellow on the Midcoast, great guy. Um, so, uh, Debra and I attended the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side Meeting where we had a presentation on, uh, Sam's Wellness Program. And that was pretty much the gist of most of the, the last meeting. And a comparison of what Sam provides compared to other sewer districts and other special districts, um, in the Bay Area. Um, on October 19th, the Harbor District is going to hear a presentation from, uh, One Shoreline, um, Executive Director, um, uh, a longer-term plan to deal with erosion in the harbor area. Um, potentially involving removal or partial removal of the breakwater. Um, One Shoreline is the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. And for a small amount of money, um, One Shoreline hired a consultant who had done a lot of work for the harbor. Um, uh, a small study looking beyond the pilot project that, that's going to involve dredging harbor sediments and, and placing them on the nearshore area to protect, um, Surfers Beach. Um, there, there's some disagreement about whether that could be, you know, a, a long-term plan, whether it's a short-term plan. But what's needed to, you know, looking out 20 or 30 years, it was going to be a presentation on October 19th. And then that same presentation is going to happen at the One Shoreline meeting, which is the last Monday in October. I don't have my calendar handy. But it would be a, you know, pretty large project, probably an Army Corps project involved, you know, probably, you know, many millions of dollars, but, um, with quite a large impact, um, from, you know, the West End Trail, you know, all the way south to potentially including Marimba. So that should be an interesting, um, item. And that's all I have this time. Anybody else? Let's see, anybody? Um, anybody with future items, agenda items that want to discuss? Seeing none, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.